We get it started, I think. So we've got just a few items on the work session for today. The first item is the forecast.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to present to you the third quarterly forecast. It's hard to believe that we're already looking at the third quarter, but you're familiar with the format of this document. It outlines at the very top some of the agenda topics for future committee meetings, as well as Board of Education workshop, work sessions, and/or meetings. In the back is just a list of items that are ongoing for your information that staff may be working on to address. It does kind of outline the scope of topics for the next several months ahead, to give you one notice about the topics that are being prepared for your review and for your discussion, but also to give you this opportunity to suggest any other topics that you want us to discuss, prepare for any of this particular period of time, or even to carry us out to chief.
So the quarterly forecast is on the table for discussion.
A quick question. I'm glad to see the ELA update. I'm looking forward to hearing that, because we certainly have been hearing some parents in the community about ELA. But I was also wondering, I thought I'd seen transportation update on work sessions. Did I somehow miss?
That was originally going to be today. We didn't do it that one year.
Okay.
Didn't put it on here, because it was actually going to be today.
Okay, gotcha. So it's just lagging a bit.
Yeah, we had some discussions in executive that made it, so it'd probably be better to come back in January, so we have a floor discussion.
Okay.
Couple of questions I had on the student support services. Always glad to see keeping us up to date on the plan for equitable discipline. Related to that, we had talked some years ago about doing a little bit more rigorous look into our alternative learning centers to really look at their efficacy.
Okay.
I wonder if that couldn't be, I don't know where we are on that look, but if that could maybe be included in that, again, my personal big question is, where are we getting cases where whatever we do in our ALCs are returning students successfully to the classroom, and we don't end up with repeats? Or when do we get cycles of repeat? So if we could look at that as part of the equitable discipline, I'd love to see that.
I've written that.
I will just mention that the primary staff person that supervises alternative learning centers is currently vacant. And so we are in the process of posting and filling that, so it'll take a little bit. So just in terms of as we move forward with timeline.
We won't delay the other one due to that, but we've got to capture.
Right. Seeing that as quarterly, it's ongoing work.
Right. So if it's not combined with that presentation, we'll make sure that we've got it for future discussions.
The budget is obviously there, which sort of got, you know, it's bullet point. Presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget, as we've talked about, we're going to initiate a budget and finance committee. So I'd like that to be a little bit more ongoing instead of a single bullet point.
Sure.
And I think it will through this process, but we've got to decide what that budget committee is going to look like and how it's going to function, but that will be a little bit expanded. The other thing that's not on this list, and again, is at least as much board work as it is staff work, but I think working together will be better, is our legislative, or maybe we should say elected affairs. How do we want to formulate a legislative agenda, an elected affairs agenda? How do we want to interact with our legislators, our other electeds? Like I said, that's board work, but I think it has some place here on the quarterly forecast because those are the other items.
Thank you.
Any other issues, Mr. Sutton?
Yeah. I did not see equity mentioned in several places. I did not see particular work on equity policy. There may be varying opinions about the need for a comprehensive policy versus how we integrate equity through everything that we do. So I would like to at least see some discussion between the leadership team as to how we go about, at least have a discussion around that. Are examples of equity policies starting to spring up in other districts around the country, in some states, and that sort of thing. And I don't know if that would be under policy, under policy and strategy, under equity. There are a number of places where equity.
It actually could fall into a number of categories. That's right. As you've already stated, you're correct, there are several items here that have an equity lens attached to it, with regard to its integration of work, as well as, we're probably going to add in some time in that quarter, another update on some of the equity work that's being done out of our Office of Equity Affairs, of the work that's supporting schools, but I hear your comments specifically about policy, and we'll look at adding that in some form. Thank you.
That will be matter, I'm sorry. Well, just, I for one think having a policy at least kind of helps, not only guide us, but also hold ourselves as a board accountable to any sort of goal, even if it's aspirational goals that are set in a policy, but that's not short of advocacy for a policy. But either way, I think we ought to have that discussion.
Thank you.
That's very operational.
Yeah, I think we'll need to bring back some of the work. There was a task force, I was on that task force back in 2010, 11, looking at an equity policy. And there was a draft language that we sort of settled on. The challenge is, how do you define equity in a policy context? And policy requires some issues beyond just guidance and vision, although we could have a policy that just was guidance and vision. So there's a lot of stuff involved in that conversation, but we're absolutely committed to that. But we can dig out some of the work of that earlier committee. I have that draft policy I shared with Mr. Bloomberg, because we had a conversation on that as well. Ms. Mayhew, did you have your hand up?
Nope.
Ms. Question, did you have something else?
Well, piggybacking on that, given the School Board Association going through this migration, the two-year migration that's been four years, but that the School Board Association is doing an equity conference in February, and I wonder if they've given any thought of having a policy for all LEAs. I mean, not that we shouldn't do our own work here in Wake County, I'm not, but I think that might be to look to them to see, or at least inquire as to whether they thought of anything or had that experience with it.
Topic of important work.
We haven't been taking everything that they've just been sending us.
We do not take everything.
We certainly shouldn't be doing our own work as well.
That's right.
And when you think about the work that you mentioned, that was done years ago.
Right.
We've grown to some degree by having a staff, you know, in a department now.
Yes, we do.
And get our thoughts about how to define some of that. So I think it's just, you know, worth the conversation.
Absolutely.
Wherever that might be.
All right. I think then, and Roxy made it through the traffic, they're good. I think we're ready for item number two on today's workshop session, the proposal about Durant Road Elementary School's calendar.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Appreciate your time as we bring forward some of the rationale and why we're proposing to have Durant Road Middle and Durant Road Elementary as a two-or-one track system. Kristen's going to be presenting. This is being spearheaded by the middle school. For the last few years, we've been monitoring the difficulty the school has had with reduced employment that would sustain a really healthy number for a multi-track calendar. She has collaborated with a lot of departments, a lot of leader schools to be able to do this. We've had parental support and staff support. So let me let her present what she has, and we'll be happy to take any questions back. And we have Janet Kehoe here, who is Durant Road Elementary School as well.
Very good. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you. It's nice to be back with you. We've been talking about a different topic tonight.
Not K-3 anymore. Gwen promoted her and brought her back.
We'll be again.
And middle school, they don't have to deal with that.
I didn't even know I got kicked out of the band. I heard that the hard way. My feelings were a little hurt, but anyway, so here we are. I had to find something else to come and discuss about. As Dr. Barker said, my name is Kristen Fisher, I'm the principal at Durant Road Middle School now, and I have just hit my year anniversary. It was November 20th that I was there, and I've been there a year, so time does fly for sure. The folks that have helped tremendously within this process, and the proposal, of course, is Dr. Casey Barker, Glenn Carosa, and Janet Kehoe next door. So those are the folks that are going to be here and help present this information. But what we're going to talk about tonight is just the history of Durant Road Middle School and the rationale of why we're proposing a single-track year-round calendar for the upcoming school year. And I'm going to focus mostly on the middle school and bring in some of the elementary as well. But when you were looking, and if you remember some of my history of being in, I was at Sycamore Creek Elementary School, both I track year-round for 10 years. If I can age myself, even longer, when I came to Wake County, my first teaching job was at Durant Road Elementary School. We're not going to say in here what that was. But I've been year-round for a very long time, and I love it dearly, and it's very close and dear to my heart. But what I learned going over to the middle school is the numbers make a huge difference. You can do things in elementary school with different numbers than you can in a healthy, multi-track middle school. You need approximately 1,300, and I have plus, students to have a four-track, healthy, multi-track middle school. And I utilize that 1,300 number, and that's looking at about 27 students per class, okay? We can, of course, we know that many of our middle schools, or a lot of our middle schools have at least 30, even in higher numbers in our classrooms, so we can add that number up to 1,400 or so. But that's just to have a really healthy, multi-track middle school. Right now, Durant Road Middle School has around 975 students. Over the past three years, Durant has lost around 325 students, and that's due to the new schools opening up around us, specifically Pine Hollow and Riverbend Middle School. Looking back, and I'm going to go three years, and this is instructional funds at the school level, and not where the county has helped us out. But in 2016, '17, the school spent almost $18,000 on employment, okay? And '17, '18, they spent a little over $30,000, that was just last year, to employ staff members to be able to instruct our students. And this year, we spent $8,000. I'll tell you, I almost needed to go to community staff.
No, I just wanted to explain that. I'm just mind melding here. So this would be funds that the school had to come up with beyond their allotted funds or conversion of MOEs in order to ensure that they had enough funds to pay for all of the staff that they needed, that came beyond school system formulas.
Correct.
Yeah, you spent more than that.
Yes.
These were additional dollars they had to come up with from somewhere else.
Right. For those of you that know me, I'm a very competitive individual, and I have pitted myself on always hitting numbers. I mean, I've been on my knees a few times, but until this year. And I was just heartbroken that we didn't hit the numbers this year, but, you know, a new place. So anyway, so we spent $8,000 above our allotment piece that the superintendent just shared. So there have been conversations and implementations over the past years of how to help and solve some of these problems or these concerns. Some of the conversations that have had is, should we collapse a track? Can we collapse a track? Of course, that's not the most favorable option. We've had teachers teaching across tracks, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit more detail. Teachers teaching across grade level, we're currently doing that, and I'm going to share that in a little bit as well. There has been conversations, does Durant need to go to a traditional calendar? And of course, the very last one there is, should we go to a single-track year-round calendar? And we have, after looking at all of those possibilities, we feel like the best proposal, knowing that something needs to be done of where the situation we are right now, that the single track is the best option for us. So we're looking at the rationale for why a single track year-round. We truly feel like it is going to increase the health of both of our schools, and it's just going to operate more efficiently. It's going to operate more efficiently for our students, it's going to operate more efficiently for our parents, our staff, and our schools overall. We also believe that the transition to a single-track year-round is a much easier transition than going straight to a traditional calendar. Much less disruption for our families. The families that we have in our schools, the staff that we have in our schools, we love year-round, as I just said. So we don't want to get away from year-round, we don't want to lose the year-round, and we want to honor that calendar, but we feel like this will be a much easier transition. And also, the goal is, and hoping that the market share will increase for us, the interest in year-round will increase for us in that area, that it's also an easier transition to go back to a multi-track year-round in the years to come. So continue looking at the rationale, we already talked about that efficiency piece, but talking about, as the superintendent just mentioned, the efficiency for staffing, the allotment, and scheduling, which we're going to get into in a little bit more detail in just a few minutes. We also feel it's going to be much more equitable for all of our students, no matter if they're AIG, special education, for all students involved. It's a much more equitable situation for us due to our numbers and for the offerings that we have within our classes. And we're also excited about the potential for all of our families to come together as one community, and to have much more parent engagement in both of our schools due to this change. So some of the things that we had to do, and first and foremost, we had to consider, what does this look like in student assignment, and how is that going to affect? Durant Road Middle School has 41 elementary schools that feed into our school, and that sounds like a lot. Now, some of those middle schools, we can get what students from, right? Our biggest, we have three biggest feeders, and that's Durant Elementary School, Wilburn Elementary School, and Braxfield Elementary School. One of the things that we did is I collected data, and if there were five or more students coming from an elementary school, I got on the phone and I called that Frank Zabon. We had a conversation about, if this happened for Durant Road Middle School, what would this look like for you, your families, your students, your school? And so we had conversations with all of those folks. Of course, Wilburn Elementary School is already a track, follows on track for calendars, so they were very excited about this possibility. If you know, of course, we always try to keep families together, so any student that has a sibling from Wilburn, we automatically put them on a track for now. And it doesn't matter what time of year they come in, when it was beginning, whether it's currently now, so those are the students that go on. We receive, this year we received 115 students from the elementary school, Durant Road Elementary School. We received 61 students, excuse me, 56 students from Wilburn Elementary School, and 41 students from Braxfield. So the conversation I had with the Braxfield principal was a little bit more lengthy. We had those conversations, we went through every single grade level of the students that we received, and had conversations about, are you going to be able to house those students? Can they move to a track four? We've also talked with student assignment. When you are in a year-round elementary school, student assignment shares with us what tracks we either need to be single or double on because of the feeding into the middle school so you don't overgo the middle school. Braxfield has been told that they are double on one and two, if I'm not mistaken, then, am I right? And that is because of Durant years ago. So student assignment is willing to work with Stephanie over at Braxfield, and she's now going to be able to double on track four, and feels very confident that this is only going to help her out in the long run as well. And so she's able to move all of those siblings, if they so choose to, on the track four, so we've had those lengthy conversations as well. We've had conversations.
I just want to add something real quick. You talked about the feeders. So when you talk about base feeders into the school, you've got Durant Road Elementary, Wilburn, and Braxfield along the year-round calendar. And then you also have Wildwood Forest. Those are the base feeders. When Kristen talked about multiple schools feeding into the school, that's where she just receives students from. So you may have students who are on a transfer elsewhere, but then they come to her for middle school. It's not technically a feeder, but she does receive students from those schools, and sometimes in larger numbers, but we wanted to reach out to multiple families as well to see how they were impacted. So I'll let you get back to that, but I just wanted to clarify the feeder pattern.
What is North Forest Pines feeding to?
North Forest Pines should feed into Heritage Middle School and Wake Forest Middle School.
Do we need to go to Wake though?
Some may, I can double check that.
A quick question, only 41 of the Braxfield year-round elementary students, is that what you said?
Those are the numbers, six graders we received this year.
That's all you received out of that year-round elementary school?
This year.
Okay.
The others go to either Wake and West Millbrook.
But didn't stay on the year-round calendar, went back to the traditional?
That's historically, it's always been.
Okay.
Well, there'd be about 100 fifth graders, so 40% of them stay in year-round.
So just putting all numbers together, I'm a little slow pulling math together. Was it like 40 from Braxfield, it was 50-something?
56 from Wilburn.
Wilburn, and 115.
115 from Durant.
So that takes you to roughly 200, but you've got to have roughly 300-plus per class, so that means you've got other 100 coming from these other 41 schools.
Providing applications.
And those are largely going to be from some of our structured calendar application schools, or is this from?
They would be coming out of East Millbrook Middle School, Wake Field, traditional West Millbrook.
But these would be some of our calendar application?
Yeah, they would be calendar applications at sixth grade, correct?
Okay.
We also had some conversations with transportation, and where it would not affect transportation. And in fact, we feel like there's times that it could be much more efficient. When you're looking at some of our larger tracks, our tracks one and four are much larger at the middle school than our tracks two and three. So when one and four are out, we have some buses coming in with very few children. So with all of us being transported at the same time, we feel like it could be much more efficient. We also wanted to make sure, as we're looking at all of our students, and our families, we wanted to make sure that we were taking care of our staff family as well, because we have a lot of staff that have children that live in Wake County. And so we collected data from our staff to figure out where their students went to school, and would that be able to accommodate them as far as if we went to a single track. Many of our staff members have students or children at elementary schools, some with us, and all over the county, and the data showed that it would be possible and it would work for all of our staff members as well. So looking at the benefits to Durant as a single track, we feel like there's a lot more flexibility with creating teams, and that's for a single subject, one grade level, non-team. Let me talk about that a little bit. Okay. So he's going to do it for me?
Yeah, I can.
All right. So, sorry. So with the single track, currently right now, all of our sixth-grade teachers teach at least two subjects, every single one of them. Then I have, last year when I got there, let me back up, I had teachers teaching over tracks. So I had some 12-month employees teaching, who were teaching two tracks at one time. So every three weeks, there's possible that there is a track coming in or out. That was one of the solutions that they gave a try and implemented. This year, I thought I was brilliant, and it didn't happen that way. But anyway, they're teaching two grade levels, okay? So I've got two tracks, my tracks two and three, and seventh and eighth grade are teaching two grade levels right now. two grade levels right now. As I mentioned, all my sixth grader are teaching two subjects and then my seventh and eighth grade tracks two and three are teaching two grade levels. You know that we have, all of our math curriculum is brand new this year, the EL curriculum is brand new in seventh and eighth grade. Our teachers are stretched very, very thin. Even though, and by brilliancy I thought, at least you get to teach one subject instead of two subjects, it's still two curriculums, right? Being able to teach two grade levels. When we talked about how it's going to be more efficient for our students, when you're looking at teaching two grade levels right now, there's really less opportunities for students than when they're on really a two-person team than on a four-person team. So those are one of the things that we're very excited about for that not happening anymore. So one grade level, a single subject. We're even throwing around some conversations about, you know, not teaming, is that the best way to go? We're having conversations about, should we team our language arts, our science and our social studies and not team our math, right? Because really, your math is what drives your schedule in middle school. Collecting that data, figuring out how many maths we need, so we have more opportunities for all of our students and not pigeonholing ourselves. So we're really excited about those possibilities. The next one you look at is just that increased PLT meaning opportunities of collaboration. I will tell you that was probably number one on the staff's list for benefits. They were so excited about the opportunity to truly collaborate, have that professional learning time with each other, which of course affects our students' education and their instruction going on in the classroom. So everyone being there. It is much more effective to have a true PLT than two people or people coming and going at all times, you know, in that multi-track. Our elective for on a single track, allowing more offerings and scheduling possibilities for our students. Right now, because our population is so small, we are having to double, triple, sometimes quadruple track arts elective classes or limited on when we can offer them per semester or even quarter, we do the wheel for our sixth grade students. Give you another example that our electives are really excited for our students is, we can have even year-long elective possibly, like for course, that's really, that's their wheelhouse and that's their passion, but still offer a semester one. Our band teacher is very excited to possibly have a woodwinds or even a brass class and having all of our students there together. In fact, we just had a chorus concert in December and that was the first time all these students were on stage at the same time. So there's so many benefits and opportunities that we can offer our students, not only in their core classes for leveling, but also in the elective classes as well. Talking about being equitable for all children, and I talked about the AG or special education and so forth. A lot of our special education are cross-curricular, cross, excuse me, are helping.
Cross-curricular.
Anyway, classes, I'm sorry, I read it. Thank you. Is our double, triple track right now. And that's very hard to teach as you have kids coming in every three weeks, right? So being on the same track, that's really going to be a bit of fit. Let's talk about our AIG students and our math offerings right now. I can tell you, like in our compact in math, our math one, we have 11 kids on track one, 11 kids on track four, I have one student on track two. So depending on who's tracked in and out and the equity there of the instructor that we're getting. I will tell you that our staff is doing an amazing job right now, but they are spread very, very thin. So it's just going to be a much better situation for all of our students. The next one is that potential for minimal absences while students are in session. So when you have a multi-track year-round, but lower numbers in a middle school, you have some of those 11-month employees, right? So let's talk about my chorus teacher, for example. So she's an 11-month employee. So she gets about four or five weeks of track out throughout the year. She deserves that, right? That's what they do. But while she's out, I still have children in. So we have a substitute that's in that room. And we have some great substitutes, but the best substitute cannot replace what that teacher does in the classroom. So that'll minimize that as well as having that staff absences over those periods of time. And again, we talked about that increased sense of community. When we received feedback from our parents, which I'm going to talk about in just a few minutes, that was one of the main things that the parents felt positively about, is that sense of community as one and even that K8 community that we want to build within our schools. And just, again, I'll go back to that equity piece. When you have two large tracks and two small tracks, for example, the PTA is very excited about, you know, doing one function, if you will. And I hate to say it, but oh, when we have this event, well, let's do it when two or three are out because they're smaller and affects less children. That's great, but that's not always fair, right? Everybody should have equal access to the opportunities. Okay, who's touching the? Thank you. All right. So let's talk a little bit about the timeline of what we've done here and the process that we've gone with. As you see, this is not, this is something that Dr. Pam Kinsey Barker has been having conversations about for over the past few years, two or three years and principals even before me. But to squeeze it down to what we've been doing, starting between August and October, we've had a lot of conversations across different departments within Huron County. Of course, we've talked with student assignment, we've had conversations with facilities, been on the phone with human resources. Communication has been great in helping us get this information out. Now that year-rouns are considered magnet, we've had conversations with them, we've talked about transportation. One of the questions coming from the parents was, what about carpool and things like that? So Janet has had conversations with safety, security, and we've already talked about the feeder schools that we have talked to as well. In October, Janet and I both had staff meetings on the same afternoon and we shared all this information that you received this evening with our staff. And we had conversations and we led them through a protocol to where they were able to come up with as many benefits and as many questions as they could possibly think of. And we had those conversations, we answered as many as we could on the spot. And then by the end of the meeting, they also completed a survey online. And we took all those benefits and those questions and we created FAQ, if you will, and we made sure that we got that out to our staff. And that was on a Thursday afternoon. The Mary next day, on a Friday, we communications worked with us, this team of folks right here, and parents received a letter talking about the history and the rationale of why we were proposing going to a single track as well as having the opportunity to complete a survey from that letter. And that was all students and all families that are currently with us and/or lives in our base that could potentially be coming to our school. Because of course, we want to bring more students onto our school. I'll tell you that with, between both of our schools, we had 20 people comment on that survey. And I look at that way as a positive thing. Usually folks that take time to complete surveys, it may not always be the positive piece. So I felt like that was a good thing, that we had 20 folks that responded to that. This team of folks sat down and we answered all of those and made sure that we put all the answers up on our websites and so parents have got the answers to those questions as well. Right after that, we sat with the PTA board over at, actually more board member, I mean more PTA members over at the elementary school, presented the information to all of them as well and led them through the same protocol that we did our staff members. And then we also met with my PTA board at the middle school and shared all that information as well. And then in November, we had a parent information session. We had 100-plus families or parents, excuse me, parents there that night and it was fabulous. This group of people, as well as the principal of Brassville came and joined us that night and we shared again all this information. We had them write all their questions on post-it notes. We answered as many as we possibly could. And again, we submitted online all the answers to any of their questions that they had. And we had a lot of positive feedback coming from. So we met with staff members, PTA members, and we have met with families at large. And so what we did this next slide is just going to talk to you, we just randomly picked three questions coming from some of those meetings. One of the questions that came from that is, will class size increase? And we actually had that question from not only staff members, but also our parents as well. We all know that the K3 class size is governed by the state law and that we also know that we do not perceive any type of class size change because our class sizes, you know, all are based on our allotments that we receive as well. So we don't see any changes as far as class sizes is concerned. Another question that came from the elementary school is, can the elementary school handle being a single track without rezoning? I'll say that Dr. Pam Kinsey Barker went over and walked the building with Janet as well as Lynn Carusa and they feel like that yes, that they're going to be able to handle housing all of the students and being on a single track four. I don't know if you want to mention something right there? Are you going to?
No, we're good.
Okay. And then finally, one of the folks asked, or a couple of people asked, for why track four, right? So if you've never been in year-round before, I will tell you that once you get on year-round, you love that track, no matter what track you were on. And people want to, you know, stay on that track. And so, but anyway, so it doesn't really matter which track that we chose, somebody was going to be unhappy with that piece of it. However, there was a reason of going track four. And that decision is when you're looking at all the feeder schools that we just talked about, and especially with Wilburn already being on a single track four calendar, as well as that all the single tracks in Wake County are on that track four calendar. So what are some of the benefits that people shared? No additional funding to pay teacher salaries. So that is definitely a benefit, that we won't need that. Teachers are not tracked out when students are in. So we heard that from parents and we've heard that from staff members as well. And then I already shared with you that our staff was very excited about having that opportunity to have staff development, have PLTs take place at one time and just creating that really healthy environment for all of our students. So one thing I didn't mention, and then Matt, if you want to move to the video right after this, is during that parent meeting that we had at Durant Road Middle School, I also had plenty of staff members speak during that time and share their perspective and how they felt like it was going to benefit our school. So I've got two folks that we're going to, that's going to share with you their perspective. The first one you're going to hear from is, her name is Chrissy Myers and she has been at the school, I think she says 20 years. In fact, I learned at Kenny Frankstein's funeral that when I was talking to Tom Benton, he hired her fresh out of, as a first-year teacher. So she's been there since Tom Benton was there. So she's also our teacher of the year. She's going to share. And then a brand spanking new person that is a music, she's not a first-year teacher, but anyway, our chorus teacher has also been to share her perspective as well.
My name is Chrissy Myers and I'm a science teacher here at Durant Road Middle School and I have been a teacher in this building for 21 years. So to say that I'm a fan of year-round, I think might be an understatement at this point. I want to talk to you about the benefits of why I think we should move to a single track year-round school. And to do that, I think I need to go back to the beginning of when I started here. So when I started here at Durant, it was right after the growing pains of the school opening. It was new and innovative for this part of the county. It was something the community rallied around, a year-round middle school in this area. And we were a school of, well, close to 2,000 students. And so each one of us was like a puzzle piece and it was clear. We had teachers who were single track. We had teachers who were teaching one subject. And everyone knew where their puzzle piece fit, parents, students, the community, teachers. And it was the big picture of Durant Road Middle School. We're still a multi-track year-round school, trying to keep the rigor and busyness and hecticness of a year-round calendar rolling, but we're doing so with less than 1,000 students. And so we've lost sort of that ability to be all on the same page, holding a single puzzle piece and knowing where we fit. To give you perspective of what that's like currently, the last two years I taught sixth grade and in order to accommodate our smaller tracks, I was a 12-month employee as a chorus teacher. And I was teaching two tracks, two different groups of students, trying to keep them on the same page. And I did it because it's what the kids needed and what was best for our school. But I found it to be very tiring and a lot of our students or our staff were forced into that position to keep Durant on a multi-track year-round calendar. So right now, I teach two grade levels, seventh and eighth grade, which is two completely different curriculum. And I have easy as a science teacher, believe it or not. My math teammate teaches her typical day, math eight, math one, math seven plus and math seven, all with a new curriculum. And we have quite a few teachers in the building who have taken on that role and that task. And in a multi-track year-round school, it's constantly changing. Every three weeks, new groups are coming in, but now it's like everyone is holding 10 puzzle pieces. And every three weeks, they get a new set of puzzle pieces because they're being moved or pulled in a different direction. And while, yes, teachers are being impacted, that does have a correlation and an impact on student learning. And as a parent of a student who goes here to Durant Road Middle School, I think to myself, and what type of classrooms would he benefit most? And so I think, you know, as a parent, I would want a place where my students' teachers have a focus on student learning and achievement, where they're not stretched so thin and they can't, we're human, we can't do everything perfectly. And we're trying to the best we can in our current situation. And so I think this is a chance for Durant students and staff and parents and the community to rebuild itself to a point like they were 20 years ago.
Hi, my name is Mary Robert McGrath. I'm the chorus teacher here at Durant Road Middle School and I'm super excited about the potential transition to a full track four school next year. One of the reasons I, as an elective teacher, I'm so excited is because it's going to give a more diverse selection of electives for our students. They'll be able to potentially take leveled classes or even year-long courses. As a performing arts teacher, a year-long course could mean that my students get to perform more, they get to travel more, they get more opportunities to do what they love. I'm also excited that we're not going to have a track division anymore and our school will have a greater sense of community. Our students need a sense of belonging and I think that being on the same schedule is really going to help that. The last thing I'm super excited about is that your students, our students, will no longer have substitutes when their elective teachers are tracked out because we'll be on the same schedule. So I'm super excited about next year.
So anyway, so we are very excited about the possibilities for our students and the effect that it'll have on the learning and the education and instruction going on in the classroom. And I'm just feeling that it'll be a great refresh for both of our schools. And again, loving the year-round calendar, honoring that. And the goal is to grow and in the years to come, go back and hold the track.
Thank you, Kristen. Comments, questions, you can work.
Let me just make an observation, that Durant is not unlike East Cary in terms of the base was never big enough to fill the school. Durant had 2,000 kids by application, not by student assignment, but by a process they could apply. And this is old, this is two-year-old data. But if every student assigned that lived in the Durant base attended, you would still have less than, you'd have about 900 students. And so the magnet program and calendar option has extracted from that group and all the other means of attracting students to the multi-track program have not delivered, if you will. So we've just been through this painful discussion through a student assignment with much less detail, much less community engagement that has happened prior to our taking all the So I appreciate the work that's been done. I look forward to hearing my colleagues' comments.
I've got about three questions, so you can go ahead.
Well, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to repeat myself. So year-round, as you all know, is very important to me and not to go back to when I was on the board before, but I am actually going to. When we opened up your Durant Road Elementary and Middle, my area was facing, my district at that time was facing great growth. And we had an opportunity of opening two schools. But what that was going to do to us was hurt the magnet program in our area. And we could actually do the year-round program to take on growth, but not give so many seats in North Raleigh that we didn't continue to feed the magnet program. So we deliberately did not make two schools in North Raleigh because we wanted to continue the health of the magnet program and we wanted to try a year-round program by choice. So that was a deliberate decision and I think more because of great leadership of administration of making me understand that even though parents in my district would have loved to have two new shiny schools in North Raleigh, my job was to keep healthy schools in the county. So we continued to keep the magnet flow moving by not having so many seats in North Raleigh. However, the year-round served a great purpose for us and at that time, year-round became very successful. Since that time, many things happened to Durant Road. We had a lot of student assignment things, not under clan, but that really hurt the school and one being changing. And one being changing the base area that was surrounded to Addams Creek, a new shiny school from Fox Road that was a great school. Fox Road is still a great school. We've corrected that. We've opened two other middle schools that we allowed kids to go to and reassign to. So Durant was kind of going down the tunnel that we created for it in later years. So when we taught, as again, I know Kristen realized that coming to me with a single-track was going to be really hard for me to do. I also knew that by her being there was her great cohorts, Janet and Stephanie working with her, great team, I mean, just amazing. But this was just a snapshot of time. And we were going to go back to multi-track once we became healthy again. So they knew when Kristen first talked to me that this was a possibility. I, of course, was saddened that we'd have to go this way, but I also had great admiration for the fact that they were taking a very bold step to make year-round. And I'm committed to it as a very successful thing and a four-track where we get our best bang for the buck in Durant Road. I want to say that I heard nothing from my population about this change. Not one email, not one phone call, not one conversation in the grocery store. That is how well their communication was, you know, our central office staff, our principals, working with PTAs, however, whatever they did, as you saw them go through this, it was brilliant. Because there was not one phone call to me about changing tracks and having to give up the calendars that they had. Even though everybody said to me, if they were going to have a communication with me, it was, "I am there for the long haul and I hope we can continue to attract kids to Durant." So I just want to applaud the principals there and the staff that went there and did what they did because, and Pam, you too. It was amazing. It was a job well done. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of questions. And I think probably my first question would be for you all as administration. The second's probably for assignments staff, and then the third, probably for superintendent. The first one, what are the, I heard the challenges of not going to a single-track year-round and maintaining the four-piece without the number of students. But what are, what cons or unintended consequences might come from going to the single-track? Assuming that there might be some. What might be any unintended consequences in moving to a single-track?
So the only cons I have heard in having conversations with parents, and we are brainstorming and probably solving around, is one of the things that parents love about year-round is that community feel they feel within a track. So I think with change always comes a little bit of anxiety. So the parents have concern with, are my kids still going to get to be with these kids, right? So having conversations of making sure that we're balancing out because on the flip side of that, one of the positives is that there are students that we do need to spread out, right? And to make it more equitable for everybody. So having those conversations around, how can we have conversations and dialogue with students about, you know, even if we do something, a survey towards the end of the year, or we can't wait that long. But anyway, you know, within, after the new year, as far as, you know, what are five or 10 students that you might want to be in your class or, you know, to where they're comfortable or things like that? And just really having conversations with students and taking some surveys there. But to be honest with you, there's not a lot of cons going to that particular track. Another concern would be if families already had vacations or things based on their tracks, which I'm very envious of people that can schedule their life out that hard. But, you know, and we have to work with families that have that. I know in the elementary school, Janet can speak a little bit further to that, is like track-out camps and things like that. So anytime you change a, like I said, you've been in year-round for, you know, 10 years or a little bit more, anytime you change a person's schedule like that, they panic a little bit, right? I mean, that's their life. So making sure that we are empathetic to that and we're working with families and helping them with all of that. But I know Janet's worked, reached out to the YMCA and have also had those conversations as well.
And I want to say that when this was first introduced, parents could click and what we really wanted was their feedback. What obstacles do you see? What difficulties would you have with this transition? And we wanted to hear from them so we could have time to work through and have some solutions for them. Or be, there might have been things we hadn't thought of. And so we tried to address anything that the parents thought was going to be an issue in the transition.
Could I just add your comment? What about childcare track-out? Because if the track-out provider is now spread across four tracks and they all are now tracking out in the same three-week period, any unintended consequence there?
Not that we've heard. A lot of my kids do the car YMCA. So as we were going through this process, I contacted them, let them know about it, said they've known about it for the last couple of months. So if there's anything they need to do to increase the size of their staff or anything to get the information out to parents, they're already ready to do all that.
We hear it from, hold on, from a lot of folks that just the year-round calendar is a challenge for track-out, but that everybody you're talking to is already in year-round. So it may not be a prevalent issue.
And it also, there's a lot of community businesses around that offer track-out camps and everything, and they've been involved as well.
Some of them struggle with your smaller tracks in providing track-out care. They don't get enough participation, which will help them.
Second question, Glenn, this is probably more so for you. We saw the impact, or the projected impact on the schools, Wilburn and the other schools that are impacted by this move. And we know that often the puzzle that we have in terms of our whole year-round system, if you will, and calendar of schools, to what extent are we certain that that impact is limited to those schools there? And what sort of lessons learned are we taking away from the fact that as we deal with growth and open new schools and sort of the whole evolution of the year-round calendar, we may see the same thing in other areas? I think Mr. Pucci just alluded to, we have the same thing in care. So how do we sort of handle that puzzle, if you will, when we make this move that we're, we feel fairly confident, I'm assuming that we feel probably confident that the impact is sort of minimized to that area to gain part of the lessons that we're learning or seeing as we open new schools in areas that are heavily year-round calendar schools? If that makes sense?
We were able to take feedback from this past year's assignment plan and use that as a guide, as well as, you know, trying to think ahead to what some other issues Durant Road families may have. So we looked at that feedback from Granicus. Trying to think ahead to, like I said, some of the parent issues, trying to get the track alignments from elementary to middle school, making sure that we had room on Track 4 for anybody who had a sibling, that Track 4 existing students, they wouldn't have to move students off of Track 4 to make room for extra siblings who would need to move on. And that was one of the things we reached out to schools. Brassville would really be the only school in this particular situation that would have that scenario. The only other main base feeder would be Wildwood Forest, which is on the traditional calendar. And since those calendars, Track 4 and traditional are pretty similar, and you see a lot of parents who prefer if they have to have a child on year-round and on traditional for the Track 4 calendar because they feel it's most equitable. If parents still choose to do that with the middle school and going year-round, we feel that that will be a little bit less of a burden for them. But we do also have availability at the traditional calendar if they want to stay at the traditional calendar middle school as well. And then with, and that was partly the reason why we wanted Track 4, Track 4 only for Durant Road Elementary, because it was such a large feeder to the middle school, to provide that alignment and that community sense for the both, for both, at, for both schools. I mean, do you feel like that's enough? I mean, we're trying to, as we learn and get feedback through different experiences, we're trying to take that and improve upon it as we move forward. We will be, hopefully in January, looking at additional year-round schools to see, again, are we, do we have enough feeders properly feeding into the school so that it provides a healthy base population for the school? Does it have the ability to take on additional applications from the traditional calendar schools in the area where we have a healthy balance among schools? These are a lot of the conversations we're going to hope to have coming in January with you.
And my final question, I am concerned about the teachers currently in the building that you talked about that teach across grade, across curriculum, and that sort of thing. And where else that might be happening and what we do about that, particularly as a board. Because to me, that's sort of a HR sort of compensation issue, I believe. I think that when you, if you're familiar with the work of public impact and opportunity culture and other work around teacher leadership roles, they have a title called a multi-classroom leader. And that sounds almost like what this is, sort of a multi-classroom, multi-grade leader. And in that structure, they have compensation models where those teachers are paid more based on the roles and responsibilities that they, that they take on. And it seems to me that we ought to be thinking at least somewhat in that direction of when we have teachers in schools, in districts, that are teaching, again, across grade, across level, multi-curriculum, multi-classroom. There ought to be some level or form of compensation around that, similar to what we missed, I think, years ago when we asked teachers to, or when we extended the learning day and didn't add more compensation to that. So this kind of feels like the same sort of thing, in my opinion. It may or may not, I don't know, but something I just want to sort of raise as kind of a thing that I heard during the presentation and the science teachers' comments about our asking teachers to kind of do more, but expecting them to do more with the same or some, some thought even less. And I just wonder, I sort of wonder out loud if we were a union state, I hate to think. So anyway, more of a comment, I guess, than a question, but something I think we ought to think about, I think, as a leadership team and board, is that what is the fairness in that? Might be the question.
I think, I think that's a good question. Especially when we are implementing make-it-work scenarios that aren't preferred. Wouldn't want to codify them long-term by how we address it, saying, you know, just because long-term, even a differentiated pay model might not be successful. And you have it in high school now, where you may very well have a teacher that teaches three classes that are all three different preps. And then next semester teaches another whole set of three different preps. So, but there's, there's room for the discussion. But I think what's happened is they're trying to be creative in how they make their limited resources work. Remember, all of this stems back to a smaller size that doesn't allow you to earn additional resources that provide the flexibility to keep from having to do those things. So if you're a larger multi-track year-round...
And it's not unlike K3.
Right, exactly. So, but it's, it's, there are lots of places currently where we need to look at what we're asking teachers to do and how we are acknowledging, recognizing, addressing the make-it-work sort of mentality.
I may not know enough to know exactly how it works. I'll say I probably know enough to be dangerous.
There's a lot of teachers that have to do this kind of multiple preps, particularly middle and high school. A lot of hands went up, I think it's on Lindsay, then Heather, then Christine.
So thinking about, what I heard was the goal was to grow back into a multi-track year-round school for both the middle school and the elementary school. What kind of tools, and this is more of a system and school-based question, what kind of tools will be used to ensure that Durant Road returns to multi-track? Is it going to be assignment? Are we looking at base? Are we looking at feeders? Are we looking at marketing to increase applications? And the second part of that is, when will there be check-ins to see where we are in that process? So it doesn't linger because a couple of years ago, we were looking at reducing the number of single-track year-rounds. And we looked at, when it was brought up of opening a school, single-track year-round, it was, we were advised against doing that. So I'm keeping that in mind to know that we're not letting this linger and we're making sure that if we're going to keep Durant healthy and bring it back to multi-track, what are the steps that are going to be taken to, to make sure or to change?
So this will be a yearly process? We'll continue to look at the health of the schools? And will you utilize all of the methods that you have mentioned? Could it possibly a base change? Do we need to look at feeder pattern changes? Is it a student assignment issue? I mean, we'll look at all of those. We're not going to leave any stone unturned while we're trying to figure out how can we get the school back to the old status it was previously.
Scott?
I'm, go ahead.
Kristen?
Well, and in hearing the presentation, to piggyback off of Mrs. Mahaffey, we heard the arguments against under-enrolled middle, middle schools that are on a four-track year-round calendar. And we have a few of those in the district. So I'm hoping that will be incorporated into our January discussion on the calendar application schools report. Because I think we, I was glad to hear that the end goal is to have a multi-track Durant because that is Durant's history and culture and identity in that community. But I think as a board, we'll need to seriously look at our other under-enrolled year-round schools where growth is, is not compelling us to have a multi-track calendar. Because I think we're getting the utilization benefits to the community from multi-track when they are fully enrolled. So I think we need to be very thoughtful and proactive about that.
So Glenn, back to your response, and Ms. Cash touched on this, but, but not specifically for middle school. And we already have two middle schools in that area that are right now under-enrolled and not healthy. And so I think we just have to be honest about that, to say that it is going to be a huge transition once you start looking at how to bring them back to multi-track and not to continue diminish the health of those two schools.
Absolutely.
Because they're already in trouble.
No, we're going to adopt it.
I mean, I will be there, but I just don't care about it.
Well, I want to say thank you very much to Ms. Karen Claus, I want to call you Kristen because I'm the first name, first name. Thank you very much for this presentation. I just want to note that, you know, as a board, we have a lot of work to do on the year-round versus not year-round, when it should be used, when shouldn't it be used. And be prepared, I think we'll probably invite you to some of that discussion as well. I thought you articulated things very well, particularly the advantage of having everybody on one track. You know, have teachers on vacation when kids are there, and the community and whatnot. And I, it's for a later conversation, but I didn't hear you advocating the value of the multi-track. And I think what we need to hear is both pieces. I mean, the multi-track clearly gives us capacity. But, so I'm just, I'm just sort of giving you a heads-up that I think we're going to need to call a person like yourself who has experience. And I also picked up early, you had a different experience in elementary school, I think I heard you say, than middle school. So where, where does that fit into the piece? So there's just a number of these things that we need to talk about because I think sometimes our calendar, it's a little bit too easy to say, this always does this, this always does this. And the one thing I think we all know in education is there ain't no always's.
And it's important to keep in mind that when we were starting year-round 20 years ago or more, it was because of high growth.
Right.
And the model is always one that's been like an accordion, that you go to single-track when, when, for some reason, the growth was slowing down.
when, when, for some reason, the growth was slowing down, you could increase it when the, when the growth was exploding. And Wilbur is an example of when it started as a single-track, it grew to a multi-track, it went back to a single-track. So there is some continuity there as well.
Yeah. Well, ideally, we're going to get calendar law change, we have the modified year-round school and the brevability, right? And modified year-round calendar, right? Stream, right?
It'll be Christmas all the time.
Moving forward.
With no snow.
That's right.
That's right, that's right.
No snow days in here.
So moving forward, we will bring this as an agenda item for board approval at the January 8 meeting.
And I'm not hearing any concern to that, am I? I think I'm hearing all positives.
Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, we want to transition because we're in the slurring in of our new colleague.
The one piece of information, just sort of mechanical business that I noted to you all from a business perspective, so committee assignments sent out last night, but we need to sort of decide how we want to run our committee meetings. Some of you have expressed in the one-on-ones that I've had so far, a desire to consolidate committee meetings so that we have fewer numbers of trips to central office, a longer time. That has some advantages and some disadvantages. We can continue committees each on a different day, as we've done in the past. Right now, student achievement has generally been on the second Monday, facilities, second Wednesday, policy last Tuesday. That requires multiple trips. We can consolidate, I think there's two consolidate, reasonable consolidation times, kind of a 12:30 to 2:30, then 3:00 to 5:00, or a 3:00 to 5:00, then 5:30 to 7:30. So I see those as three rough possible options, but I'd like a little bit of discussion and see if we can't consolidate around what's going to work best for people. Working schedules probably don't work as well for earlier-in-the-day meetings, but evenings are probably less beneficial to staff. We also need to layer on top of this discussion, we've got student assignment appeals, we've got spotlight on students that we often can combine with other committee meetings. So there's just a lot of pluses and minuses to each, but I'd like to open the floor for discussion and let's try to come to a decision if possible.
For policy, I've liked the combining it with spotlight on students, so I think that might be a place to continue the current practice, policy and spotlight being linked.
Okay, Mr. Fletcher?
At one point in time, we only had one committee of the, committee of the whole board work session once a month. And that other day before board meetings was committee meeting, committee meeting, committee meeting. And you came to the committee meetings you wanted to participate in. And we've got a different structure today in terms of expected length of committee meeting. And I don't know whether we could survive with only one board work session a month. That's, that's above my pay grade, but that was an alternative schedule in the past. Now, if we have four committees, it's one thing, if we have a fifth committee, it's another challenge. And if the, and ad hoc group, like a legislative group or, so are we going to have four or five? We got a, go ahead, constituted budget committee yet, haven't we? Was that in your memory?
Yeah, budget and finance is one of them. So we're adding, we're adding the fourth budget and finance to make that, the legislative, elected officials, that's going to stay ad hoc until we sort of figure out where we need to go. I don't see making that a standing committee, because I don't know that it needs to be standing, but there's some work we need to do around that right now. So what I'm talking about right now is planning for our four standing committees.
Part of the challenge for facilities is its coordination with county meetings.
Correct.
Much of what we do in facilities is done in order to present it to the board for approval, and then it goes to the county for approval. So the sequencing of that's important, and I would want to maintain that, that opportunity to keep the gaps between our decision and our request of the county commission at a minimum. So just as we're thinking about factors.
Well, I mean, in the past, we just let every committee decide when they wanted to meet. I just thought it was a little bit more useful if we have a consolidated discussion.
Well, I mean, of course it would help me, I mean, not that I have a lot going on in my life, but, I mean, it is a long track. I do work evening shifts at the hospital, so working to me is working evenings, not days. So it's a different, I'm in a different situation. It would be nice to be able, if I'm going to drive to central office, to at least come to two committee meetings, at least once. It doesn't mean they all need to be consolidated, but if, you know, finance was consolidated with student achievement or one of those, it would be helpful, if possible. And I did not think about the fact that that might be an option where we don't have two work sessions a month. We have one.
And I would defer to the superintendent and the chiefs.
We have not historically had difficulty of having work to do as a full board in work session in the last several years, so it might be a little slow to.
Sometimes we don't start until four, where we could.
But sometimes we don't start at four, and so we could have a committee meeting earlier.
We could start earlier and get more done in one time and consolidate a couple. I would prefer to consolidate towards the beginning of the day rather than the end for staff raises, if we could.
With the board meeting being televised and in the evening, and the opportunity for public comment, we've got that covered. And our committee meetings oftentimes are streamed, but not all of them, I don't think.
No.
So that would, daytime, there are fewer people who can come and observe if there's another way for them to see what we're doing.
Anything we could do to do more in the evening would be nice for the public.
For the public.
Out in full board. I would like to have those meetings much longer at night. Not much longer, but I'd like to have, I'd like to have more in front, more substance in front of the, the public at night, so they know we don't do, we don't just come out and have a quick meeting and leave.
I very much agree with that. I think that's one of the downfalls, is, is people don't know what's discussed in these committee meetings. That's really where I hear so much advocacy coming from, board members and the opportunity to collaborate and.
So not hearing any particular consensus, other than we'd like everything consolidated, but we also want to reduce our time, so.
I mean, a unique idea of one work session.
Or even one short work session a month, it would be, we could, we could do a short, a committee and a short work session. And then the other work session being a longer work session, that might be, because we are, facilities and, finance and budget has not been an active committee on a regular sense.
We've been doing budget as committee the whole.
To a degree, but, but potentially, if we're, if we're adding a committee, maybe we should add that to be, to go, to go as a precursor to a shortened work session.
The student recognition session is, I think preceding that, if we're going to double up on committees, it would seem preceding that with two committees might be a positive thing to do, given the fact that the, the recognition meetings are not action item agendas.
They set end times. They have set.
And they have set end time. We're not going to have.
You're saying two committees before that?
Yeah.
Okay, because those are usually, those usually are later, and so that would become almost a six-hour commitment.
Four.
Well, but it's a, but it's a defined.
Four hours prior to the recognition.
Yeah.
Go ahead. So this is a possibility.
Curious if there, if there's an opportunity to discuss this further after Mr. Hagerty explains more than, because.
Yes, well, in fact, Greg, Chris has, has responded by, by, by email. And go ahead, share what you shared with me, buddy.
Well, just that, I know everyone has a different professional situation. Mine, I have some flexibility in my schedule, but I do need to get so many hours in the week. So for me, it's easier to schedule if I have everything knowing it's on a certain day. I can set up my meetings, I can set up my work plan for the rest of the month, as opposed to when you've got like a first Monday, second Thursday, third Thursday, around like that. That's, I think, the gist of it.
It's hard.
But you suggested also in my, in your email to me that later is preferable to earlier.
It is for me personally.
But we also have to juggle the staff.
Considerations, because you have like three toddlers.
Well, just one toddler. No, for me, I mean, it's, again, I have a different situation where earlier is better for me, and it would be nice to see at least two of those committees go back-to-back. But again, that's, that's what works for me, and I'm going to serve at the pleasure of the chair.
Mr. Chairman, it might just be that the makeup of the individual committees, you may have committees that everyone on the committee in earlier time works best for, you may have committees at a later time.
Right, so we can default back to having committees decide.
I'd like to go to all of those, some of those.
But, but the reason for having this discussion is because there was some desire to do some consolidation, and that's hard to do if you have four independent conversations. And I think, I mean, so.
So it sounds like we're just kind of, sort of just shifting.
We're being off on a nice week.
A little bit.
That's good.
You know, it, it might help that some committees, if it works for the committee members to meet earlier in the day than, than later in the day. I think for particularly working folks, when I, when I work for the state, if we put them sort of back-to-back, and now you've got these four and five and six-hour blocks, that's harder to manage for folks that work to kind of leave work and you're gone a whole half-day versus four or hour, two hours. I can kind of make that work, cover lunch or skip lunch, leave work early an hour or two, and manage the two hours. Four or five hours gets a little bit more difficult to manage during the work day. Also kind of harken back to, and maybe we can do some things with, and I think I mentioned it somewhere in our executive committee the other day, about how we kind of structure the agenda for both work sessions and board meetings. My, my bigger concern and Helen Roxy just kind of touched on it, the, the benefit of the community and general public to hear some of our conversations and discussions and the thought about some of the decisions that we, we make. I think we've, we got away a little bit from, and that was, let me back up, a few years ago, that was concern that when we have conversations in committee, we have some of the same conversations in work session and/or at the board table, and there was some frustration around the redundancy of that, and that the board kind of discusses some of these things over and over again. I think that's one of those things, me personally, where the redundancy is not such a bad thing, because it allows for us, one, to really kind of take a look and do a deeper dive in some of the discussions, and it helps sometimes to kind of talk it through. But more importantly, it gave, again, the opportunity for the public and parents to hear those conversations and discussions. If it didn't catch it during that committee time, they heard it at the board table, they heard it at our work session or what have you. So the redundancy, again, I think was not necessarily a bad thing, but one that, that helped as we, again, fleshed out, particularly some of the larger issues, immediate issues, and more of an opportunity for that discussion to be heard. So I think if we, if we perhaps consider that, because I think it is sort of frustrating to all sometimes when we come out, go on a couple of policies, and then we end our, our action meeting.
Right.
Where there could be some opportunity to have some of these discussions, or, you know, a lot of us do attend the committee meetings, but we, we all don't attend committee meetings. So having some of those items placed on our agenda, even if we're not taking action, but for the benefit of discussion at the board table, I think would help, so.
So I clearly hear that, and we'll, we'll work at that, both in executive, but also work with staff to try to move in that direction. We need to be conscious at the time, because we've got next activities, but I think what I'm hearing right now is, A, there is no one right solution, because there's no such thing as right solution. There is some desire for consolidation, I don't see a mechanism to do complete consolidation. I think, let's explore the idea of every other work session being shorter, and maybe try to bring the budget and finance committee to be a committee before that shortened work session. Because if we're going to add another regular committee, that would be a good slot to add it rather than another day. If we keep the student achievements on Monday, we may try to do, make sure the student assignment appeals follow immediately after that. And the, if we keep the policy on Tuesday, then we try to keep the spotlight on students immediately, follow that. So we'll try to get a little bit more condensation, but I'm not hearing a good way to do total condensation.
So how do you do it now?
Right now, facilities is on, is the second Wednesday of the month, and that has worked reasonably well with trying to fit into the county's schedule. There might be a way to consolidate that. If an idea is there, please forward.
Does it sometimes hit though, I've noticed where you're coming over here, I mean, where we're coming in here, three days in a row for two hours, I mean, that happens considerably often, but I don't know how that hits. Maybe it's just because there's other things being put in?
Yeah, so I think we're going to try to minimize that.
Student achievement, it's usually the second Monday, facilities is the second Wednesday, and you may have, you shouldn't have a board meeting, but you might have a board meeting, or you could have appeal hearings on Thursday, or things like that.
Yeah.
It's unpracticed.
All right, Melissa and I will do some playing with schedules to try to make some things work as well, but I think I'm getting at least somewhat of a sense that we can make some progress. I don't think we can solve all of the, all of the consolidation issue. All right, thank you all. We will now conclude this work session and move to the board meeting with our special square and circle.